But I'm not going to allow full meetings in this room for the rest of the year. We'll do hybrid. So from maybe like October planning and zoning, half of you will be here. Or September, but probably half, and then October will be the other half. But we'll figure it out just based on who's comfortable coming in. I know today we had a finance committee meeting and Stephen Wilson chose to say remote. So we're gonna, we'll figure out the logistics. I've always tried to be here for meetings just to keep some consistency, but either here or the senior center.
Great. Well, I've got seven o'clock. Should we get going, Jack? Okay, good. Okay, let's call this meeting of the Smithville Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I need to state at the outset that the city was notified yesterday that the two items on the agenda from Eric Dunham, item number five and six. We need to make a change there. Mr. Dunham notified the city and indicated that his main presenter could not be here tonight. And so he requested that those agenda items be tabled until our next meeting, which is August 11th. So in order to table those two items, we need to have a motion.
So before we do that, can we get a roll call vote to make sure everybody is here? Even though we have it on video, Brandy, can we just do a roll call of attendance?
Certainly.
Yep. Deb?
Here.
Mayor Bowley?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Carmen?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
And Connor, which he's not here.
Okay. Good thing we took that role. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back to the matter of business at hand, then we need a motion to table agenda items five and six, or these matters from Eric Dunham until the August 11th meeting. Can someone put that motion forward, please?
So moved as you stated.
Second.
Carmen seconded. Thank you. Next, we need to approve the minutes from our last meeting from June 9th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's a motion in a second. It should go to discussion if there is any. If not, it should be a roll call vote.
I'm sorry I jumped the gun there, Jack. Is there any discussion on the tabling of this, these matters? Then let's have a vote.
Okay. Carmen?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mayor Bowley?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Rand?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Does that suffice? Okay. Now let's move to approving the minutes from the June 9th meeting. Hopefully everyone has had a chance to review those. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Okay, I'm able to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second?
Second.
Dennis seconded.
Second.
All right, and a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, and anyone against? Okay, five a's, one abstain, and zero noes.
Minutes have been approved. Let's go on to the staff report. Mr. Hendricks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Brandy so appropriately printed out the report for me so I can have it available, so I can give you guys the information. As of today, we have invoiced 25 new residential, single-family residential building permits since January 1, I'm sorry to clarify. And I had to go inquire from Brandy because I was a little confused with all the commercial construction going on. And sorry, I just got a message from Mr. Seminus, so I'm trying to track that down. In any event, the reason on my report, I wondered why there were no commercial permits. It's because they were all issued in, prior to January 1 of this year. And I say that because I'm giving you all a heads up that we have numerous projects that are either preparing to come for site plan review or are preparing for construction sooner rather than later. I'll go through a tally of where they're at from north to south as best as I can recall. Number one is the Herzog Foundation home offices up on 188th Street. I am anticipating that will be at our next meeting for them to, excuse me, not our next meeting, the September meeting, they want to present to me by January, or by, excuse me, to make it on the September meeting, they want to be presented to me by August 1, give me enough time to do the review. In addition, I am anticipating that there will be the second phase down where Full Features is, if you recall several years ago, they came through. Some of you may recall, they came through and did a conceptual overlay plan so that they could have a couple of lots with only one of those lots with access, with frontage on a public street, so the nursery side of it. And they are currently preparing, and as they identified in that conceptual plan, a mini storage place. They have just today submitted the first draft of those documents to me and the engineering side that'll go to Chuck Souls on this. And it looks like there's a two-story building up front, and then they'll start working their way back in phases of the other storage buildings. The front building will be an indoor storage unit complex with a few exterior entrances, but the bulk of it is in a two-story building where you walk in a door and then walk through the hallways to enter. So it's a little different than what we've seen here in town. That one's been, I anticipate it will be coming shortly as well. Then I anticipate the medical marijuana dispensary shortly as well. It's coming soon. I'm, we're working with engineers on it as well. As well as the final one is the Shamrock Gas Station, which is just north of the Price Chopper existing location. They're working on plans and we've been assisting them. They're going to tear the building completely down and rebuild it completely, which will be a benefit to the eyes of everybody coming from the north. That will certainly be an enhancement. So we're going to be fairly busy with the commercial work on that over the next few months. And I have just been informed in the last couple of weeks that Eagle Ridge subdivision has now got a new contractor, and that contractor's supposed to mobilize this week, so that will get back on track to get the construction going on it. That will be a much welcomed site for us as it relates to getting some additional residential lots. We're running low on residential lots. Before I hand this over to our consultant that's here at tonight's meeting, I'll ask you, do you all have any questions about what I presented or where we're at or what we need to do going forward? And if you don't, I will start the comp plan discussion.
Jack, Ms. Dennis, last meeting, we were online to be finished by Labor Day on both the Price Chopper and Porter's, and then starting the new strip mall. Are we still on schedule with those?
Definitively Porter's. I spoke with Kent Porter earlier this week on some curb changes they wanted to make. They are definitively ready to go and will be ready to open at that time unless there's some major situation that occurs and causes contractors to shut down. That is currently the plan as well for Price Chopper, but their time is running, it's really tight on time if they can make that schedule for the Price Chopper. And I am waiting for the construction plans on the strip mall. They've been, as a part of that conceptual plan, they're pre-approved without having to come here for that building as it matches the rest of the stuff in the subdivision or the development. I would anticipate into this week, beginning of next, getting those building plans. Looks like it's about an 8,500 square feet strip mall with seven units in it, potential units, but it'll be finished in white box, which is, the whole thing will be wide open inside. And then as they obtain tenants, they'll do a tenant finish permit and finish up the walls, bathrooms, et cetera, for each of those units as they are needed. The north portion of the building will also include a drive-through window, so there's a potential for a drive-through retail business there as well. Anything else?
Thank you.
If not, I would like to introduce Leslie Deacon with John Stover and Associates. They're a part of the consultant team, Future IQ and John Stover Associates are the consultants running our comprehensive plan update process. You may have remember her from the January kickoff. You would have remembered her from the task force meetings, but for they were shut down back in March. We're getting ready for those again. You saw some of that stuff today, I'm sure. And the purpose of tonight is for Leslie to start the discussion of the links I sent you last week of what the pillar portion of the character areas and the pillar discussion is starting to look like. That link that you have is a continuous live update. So if you looked at it Monday and something else was added, you can go back to that same link and look at it again, and more information is added on a fairly regular basis. So with that being said.
Maps?
Yes, the one that had the two maps on it and you adjust, yep. And we're gonna, we'll have Leslie, she's gonna be talking about that now here for however long it takes. So we're gonna, I'll give the table over to Leslie. Leslie, thank you.
No, thank you for the introduction. As Jack said, I've been working as part of the consultant team on the comprehensive plan update. We've been underway for several months now since we've kicked off. COVID has definitely thrown a wrench in some of our initial plans in terms of when we were expecting to do some of our engagement and kind of going through the initial process that we had outlined. To keep us on schedule, we've kind of flipped the process a little bit and started with working through some of the nuts and the bolts in the comp plan draft and some foundational elements in terms of analysis for the comprehensive plan. And now we're at a point where we're really excited to start re-engaging the community, especially through the task force discussions that we have planned for the end of July. As Jack mentioned, we'll be doing a task force session with four different task forces, probably about a two-hour meeting for each task force. And then in about a month or so, we'll be re-engaging the task forces again in an additional meeting. So I wanted to just kind of jump on today. Thank you so much for letting me pop in and talk through really big picture where we're at in the process and kind of set the stage a little bit more clearly on what that link was that was sent out and how we're going to be utilizing that type of content to inform some of the decision-making and help inform and guide conversations through the task forces as well. And so as Jack said, I'm glad you gave the caveat that that's kind of a live link that we're editing and working through iterations as we have more discussions. We'll see changes throughout that process over the next few weeks and as we're engaging the task forces. Our team thought that it would be helpful to go ahead and share that with the planning commission ahead of time before we share it with the task forces. And then also I believe that link is also, if it hasn't been sent to the Board of Aldermen, it's going to be sent pretty shortly. So they'll also kind of get a preview of some of the content that we'll be talking about. These character area maps that you'll see throughout that storyboard or story map is really our first stab at iterating how to get to a future land use map for Smithville and start honing Andy's abstract ideas that. I'm gonna pause for one second and lock my dog away. I'm so sorry. Hold on one moment.
That dog could really use a dog park.
I know.
To continue our dog park discussion.
I had him, I had him silent for about two hours before this call, but he's a social, social walker. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so as I was saying, these story maps present kind of an iterative concept or vignettes of some of the forces that are going to come into play on guiding the decision-making for the future land use map, which is of course a really important key component of the comprehensive plan. We have presented these ideas in the character areas of Smithville. This is a theme that we're pulling from the 2005 comp plan as a tool to hone in on distinct areas in special places throughout the city to kind of guide these conversations a little bit more specifically as conditions change throughout the area. We're looking at opportunities for development, what might be feasible in that area, not only from a land planning perspective, but also market realities and what projections might look like for the next 10 years. And then we're also importantly taking into consideration natural features or buffers that are important to conserve and retain. So those are some of just the broad things that you'll see. Again, we're looking at five character areas. These have changed a little bit from the 2005 comp plan. That was kind of our starting point. We reassessed them. One of the differences in that south area along 169, we went ahead and split that into a southern node and also an industrial node just north of that. We've expanded some of the boundaries, like the hospital bluff areas expanded quite a bit. The residential, the downtown, we've really expanded from just the downtown core to like all the, all the factories around it, connecting that downtown to the lake, highlighting that Main Street Trail going in, and the existing fabric of the neighborhood surrounding that commercial district as well as kind of that piece along 169. And then that continues north to the north residential area. So in that story map, you'll see we have like an overview of what we've done to date to kind of help catch people up to process, up on the process. We include some of our benchmark projections of what are we planning for for the next 10 years in terms of residential growth and in terms of employment growth, knowing that these are baseline estimates and some of the forces at play will impact that as well as opportunities to maybe push those numbers in different directions to depending on receptivity to change and looking at drivers for increasing the local economy in Smithville, those types of things. And then when you slide down further into the story map is where you see the overview of all the areas together. And then each story map in particular has its little vignette slider. We tried to come up with a more interactive way of sharing this information as especially this will become more and more public and the task forces will be able to see this content either in the task force meetings or right before or in the weeks following the task force meetings as well. That's a general overview. Does anyone have any questions specific to this overview or a more general concept question of what this material is or anything?
A general question, population. When I read the population projections, I thought that seems kind of low. I thought, it struck me as low.
That's a great point, because, and I think, Jack, I don't know if you had something to say, you're unmuted. Jack and I have talked about this too a little bit offline, where when we set those projections, what we typically do is we run through many different scenarios based primarily on past trends and then project those into the future and do a blend of different methodologies to kind of hone in on that. One of the things that I think is really unique about Smithville and one of the assets that keeps coming up in conversation is how desirable your city is to live. And I think the housing market in Smithville is very strong with a lot of, as Jack was even just giving an overview of some of the developments at play. I could see the housing market pushing that, that population projection a little bit too, like kind of see where, where that goes. But I think as a core projection model, we feel pretty good about kind of that baseline. And then if, if population growth is something that comes up more and more in the task force conversations as an interest for the community, we can look to see how those numbers may change based on different growth strategies. One of the things that we'll be doing in a few weeks and later, as we go through this process a little bit more with creating that future land use map, is we'll start to look at these areas where we've identified, for instance, housing as being kind of the prime target spots throughout the city. We'll start looking at those areas in terms of density and expected achievable units that would maybe be there and start looking to see how that compares to the population projections. Because I'll be, I'll be curious to see how some of these new residential developments that are probably in play for the midterm, you know, zero to five years from now, how that correlates with the 3,000 to 4,500 range that we have now. So I made a note of that being potentially low to kind of readdress.
Thank you. It seemed to me that that might be achievable in five years level.
The biggest problem we have right now, like Jack said, we're out of lots.
And Deb, let me clarify something. Let's assume 4,500 on the high end of Leslie's estimation.
Right.
Divide that by 10 for the, each of the 10 years, and then divide that by the new, what we anticipate is going to be the new census density, which is going to drop substantially, it looks like, to probably 2.6 or 2.7. When you do that, that means you're going to have 166 new houses a year coming in.
Ah, okay.
So that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
But if you, if you reduce that down to 3,500, obviously that number drops 10 or 20. And then as Leslie highlighted, I think some of the aspects are going to be the difference between some higher density housing, multifamily house type scenarios, and continuing with the existing single family, because a single-family home has a much higher chance of having more than 2.6, 2.7 people in it than an apartment would. But we've already reduced from 3.1 in 2010, we anticipate we lost in density 0.4 people. So it may be more. We'll find out here shortly. This is getting close to being done.
Yeah, I have a question, and perhaps this question should be presented to the Chamber of Commerce. Correct me if I'm in error. I realize comprehensive planning is looking at various parts of the city and assigning a plans and zoning level to them, at least the way I understand it. Five, 10, 20 years, whatever. In the general mission statement, are you using the word diversity at all? And, and I think you can, you can broach that topic with housing for the, the working class and housing for the poor, that kind of thing. So are, is this the appropriate place to ask that question? Or if it is, then the question is, is diversity a part of this document?
I believe so. I believe it's actually one of the task forces diverse housing.
Yeah, it is. It's part of the housing task force, diversity.
Diversity in housing options.
Yeah.
So, okay, so it's intrinsic in those, those phrases there.
Yeah, that one, I'm on that one. So yeah, diversity was all part of that.
And, and that is focused primarily on economic diversity and lifestyle diversity as it relates to one person in an apartment versus 10 people in a big home. And we have to have options for the different markets. So senior housing, young housing.
Senior, yes, see, yes. Thank you, Jack.
Okay, and, and you can always sign up for more task forces than the ones you already signed up for, so.
Well, that hurts.
If you're interested in that one, sign up for it.
You could have given me open hand, but anyway, go ahead.
Back to you, Leslie.
Yeah, any other just general broad questions or comments at this point? There's a lot of content in the story maps. And as I, as Jack mentioned, as I mentioned, they're evolving and we expect them to continue to evolve. We're really excited to start getting into the nitty-gritty and the nuts and the bolts of this. We've been working really strategically to pull in concepts from the pillars, from the strategic plan as kind of the underlying basis of the comp plan. It's like the key organizational element. There's a little bit of pieces, a little few pieces throughout that story map, but hit on that tone. In the actual comprehensive plan document, those pillars are much stronger of a force than what you see in this story map at this point too. Again, this is really tailored to starting to guide conversations to get to the future land use map with this being kind of the first path in iteration for it. If I may, I'd like to just see if anybody had any feedback on if there was anything that they saw that they weren't expecting or anything that they see that there might be contention around the topic or a lot of opinions that will probably create more lively conversations. Again, we want to make sure that as we release this for the task force, this kind of gets your blessing a little bit at least to make sure that we're on the right path forward and we're not presenting ideas that are really contrary to the efforts that you all have been working for as a planning commission for the past series of years.
I liked the part where the trails and the connectivity. I thought that was nicely laid out. I thought that was very nice. I also liked. Those are good. I like that. The other thing that I liked was the discussion regarding the south end of town as being vibrant, urban. I think that's going to be a great pull on the south end like that. That's going to be nice. I like that too.
So the education task force obviously is going to have its work cut out because we don't know at this point what the face of education is going to look like in Smithville or anywhere else in the country for that matter. So that's going to be interesting, and you may even be able to pull more task force members into that as a result of all this. Because if I recall, that one was kind of, was it sparsely teamed?
Well, actually, the small-town feel is the one that had the fewest.
Not in the fewest, I knew that.
Yeah, the, the education component is more focused with the Board of Aldermen and the school board working together, having joint meetings. They've had a few, and we anticipate that process will continue. We want to have a lot of input as it relates to the educational side, but ultimately the school board, we believe, is the most important driver as it relates to that education link, because they're usually full of educators, so.
We have our next meeting in August. I shared it from my page, but it'll, it'll be out there as well. But also, we, the education pillar talks about the diversity of education. And one of the things that thankfully Dr. Schuets brought up at the Chamber of Commerce meeting was the new classrooms at Eagle Heights, if their bond measure passes, will be two dedicated to early child, two of those rooms will be dedicated to early childhood, which he said their early childhood today is when it came to the district, which he acknowledges was kind of a miss on his part, because looking at our demographic data, we got a lot of babies. Connor, you got one at home?
That's right.
So I think that'll be some of the changes we'll see to the education is looking at continued education as well as early childhood.
Well, we had baby boomers after World War II. I think we're going to have COVID boomers next.
Possibly. You can get off Facebook, maybe.
Children of the corn. Yes.
Back to the population density too. If you look around this board, which kind of represents Smithville more now than it is in the past. You got a lot of grandparents and retirees, but you also have some young families, so. Connor could have three more, three or four more babies running around soon and. You know, Deb, you're not going to have any more children running around, so.
No.
That density is going to continue to kind of. Down or. Level off pretty soon. If we get that diversity in housing especially, like Jack said, single people are probably going to live in apartments, senior housing is going to be, you know, one or two people.
Yeah.
I encourage everybody to attend that joint meeting to the school board and the city, at least virtually if you can.
And as you got today, the flyer. For all of those, all of you that were signed up for a task force, you got that an email today. With a flyer that identifies the time and place of the meeting. It will be virtual as well. But we are going to be doing them at the Performing Arts Center. To the extent that I think the largest group we has have had. There's twenty in the biggest group, twenty-four in the biggest group. So there is plenty of room if all of the folks show up. To have plenty of room inside the Performing Arts Center for social distancing. And we'll be working on the, the, the technical side. With the school consultant, the school technical people and our consultants, technical people, so that the presentation is, is. Visible, audio, auto, you can hear it as well, and there will be the ability to interact from that, that. That center, so we'll. Hopefully, we're going to have a a nice turnout and you will also note in the email I sent out. Please invite your friends and neighbors, give them a copy of the flyer digitally. And there's a direct link at the bottom so they can sign up for the task forces again. If they haven't signed up, we'd like. For them to so that we can continue to provide them information. And the reason it's important is. The follow-up meetings after the July meetings will be at the end of August. And they will be a little, it will be a little different and and there will likely be. A homework component where we're asking for direct assistance from everybody. To provide us with visual representations of what they find appealing, what they're looking for. So that we can use that information and that data to help further refine the final version of the complaint. I think that's an accurate depiction. Is that right, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Good job. Thank you.
Just curious, Jack, which pillar has twenty-four?
The economic.
Oh.
The economic side.
The other one that says we need more Chick-fil-A.
Oh, that one.
Excuse me?
What, Whataburger is supposed to be coming to Kansas City? Maybe we can get it here.
We've already done some reaching out on Whataburger. I know. The high schoolers, when they did their presentations for Green Tie Affair, they had one. Because last year when they came to me, asking me for restaurants, I said, go do your research and find out what it actually takes to bring these restaurants in. So one of them had a big presentation on Chick-fil-A, one had a presentation on Canes. And they all realized that it takes a lot of money and knowing the right people to get those kinds of things here. It's not just the city can call up. Raising Canes and say, put a restaurant here.
Yeah, we got six people that want it. Please come here.
Yeah, eight hundred fifty thousand liquid capital, I think, was the number that they found for Raising Canes.
Yeah.
And twenty thousand traffic, which we only have on one corner and that corner is pretty full right now.
Well, actually, the numbers are pretty good when you get farther south.
Yeah. Yeah.
I want a Dairy Queen.
Hey, I've been working on it.
Is there any more question, information, thoughts that we'd like to present to Leslie? Or are we?
Damien, you made a statement a couple of statements ago that I couldn't hear. It was something about. Education, virtual meeting, encouraged us to attend. What was that?
On August, I think it's August third, right, Jack? Let me look.
I don't recall, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
I think it's August third. So the, the meeting between the entire school board and the city board is on, let me look it up real quick. I shared it from my page. It's on August third at six o'clock. It happens to be the day before the election too. Coincidence, just, just coincidence. So, yeah, that's our entire Board of Aldermen and the entire school board. We will meet at the cafeteria. We'll space out enough that we can socially distance. But we will broadcast that meeting if you have questions for public comment, but that's. If you've ever attended one of those, I know Carmen has. I don't hold back on asking questions. I don't think anybody else does either when it comes to Alderwoman Wilson. We. We asked the school board some questions and they asked us some questions and we're very candid on. Where we see the houses going. One of the things they were talking about last time was buying land on the south end because of. They thought that's where the population growth was going to be, but as we know from planning and zoning, the. Hills of Shannon addition, there's supposed to be two hundred plus homes is now only going to be like seven. We don't really have any subdivisions where they're going to build down there. There's no planned development, but on the north end, we've got multiple subdivisions, multiple fill-in areas. And, you know, the Clay Creek type developments up there. Where the population is going to grow, so. They don't always know what's going on in the city because the school board, the school district is a lot bigger area than just the city of Smithville. And I don't know how many of them are residents. The number is bigger now after this past election, but before I think it was less than half. Were in city limits. So it's a good time for us to all talk about what's developing here, what's going forward here, our comprehensive plan. You know, what we'd like to see for education in cities, so. It's a good meeting. You should, you should dial in or participate.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like it's well worth going to.
And we try to do that quarterly now. So when I took office, we originally had just a liaison meeting where it was two members of the school board, two members of the city board. And I didn't feel like we really got a lot done in that meeting. It was just kind of informational.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Hendrick, shall we move on?
I, I, that's up to you. You're the chairman. I'm just the staff member.
Well, why don't we move on then?
Yep, if we're ready, we can move to the item four and we can say goodbye to Leslie unless she wants to watch the rest.
Leslie, thank you for all the.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we'll be putting this story map up in advance of the task force meetings for kind of a wider audience. If there's any one-on-one conversations that anybody wants to have, Jack can pass along contact information. From me and my team too, if there's anything you wanted to dive into and for the end of the month. Thank you. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's move on to number four. Can you give us a recap, Jack?
Yes, and this is a perfect time to segue into some of the annexation discussion. As you may recall. We've always handled the annexation public hearing at the planning commission level. It's been a designated. The board designated it to go to you guys a long time ago, so we've always done it that way. When we started reviewing the annexation policy for the Board of Aldermen. Our attorney indicated there were some case law out there that adjusted the thinking on that and that we should. For all future annexations, take those directly to the Board of Aldermen. So the planning commission won't have any impact or input on that, other than when we start talking about the annexation policy stuff. And how the comprehensive plan brings that together. So that's why. We pulled the annexation from last month's meeting and it went directly to the Board of Aldermen or two months ago. Ultimately, as a result of those meetings. The annexation has occurred and that annexation that is up for today is to set the initial zoning. As it relates to this parcel of ground. It, we, we're required to set the zoning on all parcels that come into town. This one will be. The one we do this time as it, as it relates to the annexation. Sometimes in the, in, in the future, we will likely have. A, let's say it's a sixty acre tract and there's a developer, there's wanting to develop it, similar to we've had in the past. Where there's a, an annexation, set the initial zoning, do the division and all that, all at the same time. That's going to change with this process. So today, on item four, we are talking about setting the initial zoning. For one house in an existing subdivision that's fully constructed. The Lakeside Crossing subdivision, if you pull up the GIS map sometime and do a little doodling. If you look at that area over by the dam, just south of it a bit, you will see. That subdivision and a lot of green squares in it and. Now with this annexation, there are ten lots in that subdivision of about fifty that are not inside the current city limits. Neighbors on either side. So you're driving down a regular old subdivision, just like what ones most of you live in, and you have neighbors that are in and neighbors that are out. This is one of those. There was some work done by our attorney, send out letters to a whole bunch of folks and and Ms. Whaley, go ahead and go, went ahead and filed the application. And the annexation has occurred. Ultimately. We have to go through the basic process of all the other rezonings to make this technically legal, but. It's a little different because some of the questions don't make sense. If if you read the staff report on this, for exam, example, one of the questions that we always discuss is. The time the property has remained vacant as zone. Well, it doesn't really apply because it's been zoned residential in the county forever. And it's not vacant. It's fully developed, so. Ultimately, I've submitted the staff report. We would base, recommend basing a findings of fact based upon those. Those general factors that are laid out there. As I'm sitting here, I, I realize that I never sent you the proposed findings of fact in this. But I will tell you, the proposed findings of fact document takes. The character of the neighborhood, consider those eight items following it and just cuts and paste and puts it in there, so. Ultimately, if there's any discussion, the proposal would be to. Set this initial zoning on this is R one B, which is the zoning of all of the city lots in that area, single family residential. And the R one B is the size of the lot, which is seventy-five foot wide generally and. Just like the standard subdivision stuff we have in most of our subdivisions. If there are any questions about staff report or otherwise, I'll certainly answer them. To make progress on it ultimately. It would be a motion to recommend approval based upon the. Recommended findings of fact using the staff report findings would be the easiest way to do that.
I move to approve the finding of facts based on staff report. So Jack, just so everyone else is aware of this board, we have about a dozen of these that we'll probably see.
Yeah.
So, so how does this happen where you have a subdivision where you have a number of houses that, that aren't in the city?
Well, it's an interesting story. Actually, the subdivision was being worked on in the county because at the time. The subdivision was being developed initially, it was not adjacent to the city of Smithville. At the time Lakeside Crossing was going in. Strawberry Hill, which is on the other side of the road, hadn't annexed. So these folks were building the subdivision and were hoping to annex into Smithville. But in order to do that, they had to have an agreement to hook up to the city sewers. They had to have an agreement to annex. The property owner did that. And then they started the development, started the design, and before they got. To the point when they finally became contiguous to the city, they'd already sold. Eleven, twelve, twelve of the lots to builders. And for some reason, they never told the builders that they needed to annex, so those lots couldn't come in. With that, because the owner has to be the one to, to request voluntary annexation. So we annexed everything but those twelve lots. When I got here in two thousand and seven, shortly thereafter, the next door neighbor to this lady annexed. So and and the, the sales pitch we made to them was your sewer bill goes down if you annex. We charge more for people who are connected to our sewer or connected to our water that don't live in the city limits. They pay more for their water or sewer. And those folks, that was their decision. So effective at the last, when, when that property annexed. I don't know how long it takes to go through the process, but ultimately, the billing for the, the Ms. Whaley's property. Her sewer bill is going to go down substantially. Because now she's in the city. So that'll be her benefit to it, but ultimately, that's what happened. It was access to the sewers. We also have a similar agreement with property to a little further east on. Hundred fifty-six, which is the Mount Olivet portion that runs over to Harbor Town. But just north of the road before you turn to go to Harbor Town is Quail Ridge. That subdivision has the same scenario, has the same agreement. When those properties become contiguous, they're supposed to voluntarily annex. We haven't sent any notices to any of those folk, folks. Because it was just a year or so ago that the Oaks at Paradise Point went in. It was annexed. Which is that five lot subdivision over there by Mr. Burns from two years ago. And now that property is contiguous to a couple of the lots, so we anticipate that process will start there. So that's how it happens.
Okay.
A little bizarre.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was curious. Thank you for that astute explanation.
Okay.
It, it appears that we need to open a public hearing?
Yep, and it doesn't look like we have any public, so that'll be quick.
Then we will close the public hearing. Okay.
Yes, so. Just so everyone's aware, the board, you know, as part of our conference of planning, our strategic planning. Annexation is one of our topics that we're working on quite a bit. So expect to see a few of these. I know we're working on annexing Smith Fork as well, Jack, right?
Yes, yes.
It's a priority of the board. Our attorneys are working it. Jack's working it, so expect to see a few more of these coming in.
I'm curious as to the, the motivation of taking annexation issues. P and Z. What, what was the motivation there? What was the, the attorney's?
There is a case that apparently says, using the exact language in the statute for chapter seventy-one. It says the govern, or the, the entity or the municipality or what, I don't remember that portion of the word, shall hold a public hearing. In another law, that same language saying shall hold a public hearing was determined that it is a non-delegable duty. Which means they can not delegate the planning commission to hold that hearing. It has to be a public hearing and it has to be in front of the Board of Aldermen.
When was this handed down, this opinion?
The legal opinion from our attorney came about a month and a half ago. I don't know.
Okay, so, so we're not mandated, the city was not mandated to do this. It was just strongly suggested. By interpretation?
Right, because no one sued us. That's the only time we'd ever get mandated to do it is if we were sued and we lost.
Okay, thank you.
So this is our attorney's efforts to avoid getting sued. And giving my past history, I think that's a good thing. We don't like.
Yeah, well, I, I was just worried about the word plans and plans and zoning.
Yep, yep.
It's, it's almost like an afterthought.
Well, and, and part of the comprehensive planning process. Will include areas of future annexation. That's part of the concept of, of what this discussion will be. Where should be, be looking to annex? Where are the areas that we want to avoid? We don't want to annex those areas. There are tactical reasons associated with growth. For example. In the planning, generally in the planning discussion regionally. A lot of folks don't want to get what's called Gladstone. Which was completely enveloped by Kansas City. They annexed everything around them, so Gladstone is landlocked. And that happened in one fell swoop. They went from the existing boundary south of Gladstone all the way to four thirty-five in one fell swoop. Um, and that happened in one fell swoop. They went from the existing bound- boundary south of Gladstone all the way to four thirty-five and one fell swoop. They also changed the laws, but um on on how that happens, but. We don't want to get Gladstoned, so we want to make sure we got our growth area where we want it to be, not reacting to Kansas City's growth.
Yeah, and Kansas City, if you've noticed, has crossed ninety-two between here and Flat City. And if you look, they had water supplies into Carney and Flat City, not to us, but those two. Um, so they have passive annexation to both those cities.
If somebody. We're obviously contiguous to them at the one sixty-nine corridor.
So you're arguing precedent.
We are what?
Ma- the mayor's comment was was uh presenting precedent.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Pretty much anything south of one hundred thirty-second now is pretty much Kansas City. And they cross, they they did eminent domain on about two hundred feet north of one hundred thirty-second, right, Jack?
Yeah, they went all the way to the north side of uh hundred and thirty-second. Kansas City does that on all of theirs. When they take it, they take it to two hundred feet north. Of the roadway, um so that they can control the road um and its development. It's very costly to do it, um but it uh gives them. A lot of control associated with what happens at those intersections and and protecting traffic flows in and out of their community, so.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I would say we want to avoid being Gladstoned at all costs at this point.
We're twelve miles long. We got a ways to go, but yeah, anyway.
Um, regarding the motion that we put forth on this, do we need to modify that with regards to the finding of fa- findings of fact, Jack?
No, I think the mayor's motion and the second, I don't remember if it was Dennis Dennis or Connor that made it, but either one of them. Um, either way, the motion and second are appropriate. I know um how to get this to the Board of Aldermen. Um, the only thing you have left, uh, Mr. Chairman, is to see if there's any specific discussion on this. Specific act. Um, if not, it's a roll call vote.
Is there any specific discussion on this specific act? Okay, then let's have a roll call vote. Randy.
Okay, Connor. Alderman Wilson. Carmen.
Yes.
Deb. Mayor Bowley. Dennis. Rand.
I.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. I see nothing else on the agenda.
You are correct, sir.
Then do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. I don't know. I saw Carmen's lips moving. Who seconded it? Okay, good.
And a voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Do you want to post? All right.
Thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna have a lively meeting next month.
Yes, you will. I just sent you an email um with the link to the map stuff that Leslie was talking about. It's a direct link. That's all that's in it, um instead of the flyer that she had with the link at the bottom, so.
Thank you, Jack.
Connor, you look tired.
Yeah, exactly.
Parent fatigue there, guy.
Maybe you can help me out.
I'm leaving.
Have a good night, guys.